Five o'clock and we'll go ahead and we'll call this regular city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. If you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Deb.
Tyler.
Here.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Okay. Thank you everyone for attending and Rodney is on the telephone with us. Move to agenda item number four and before we approve the agenda, I would like to make this amendment and move agenda item number 21, which is concerning the Oak Street occupancy, will move that to follow agenda item number 12. Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, just like to thank Kylie Skow, who's our videographer this evening, and like to thank John Emswiler and his team for organizing the Moving Veterans Forward event that occurred last Thursday at the VFW. That was certainly a worthy cause. It was good food, a lot of people in attendance, so we certainly thank John for that. Just a reminder, the live greeting card windows event is in downtown Algonah, two weeks from tonight, November the 29th, and that'll be from 6:30 until 8:00. In addition to the live greeting card windows, there's music, a stationary parade, and horse-drawn wagon rides. And then finally Thanksgiving is just a week and a half away, so we hope everyone has an opportunity to spend some cherished time with their family and friends. So council have anything?
The only thing I'd add on to your live greeting card event, there's also a closing that SPAC is having for the local artists at the Algonah Publishing that evening also. So I believe that runs six o'clock till 7:30, so you can kind of fit that right in before you go uptown for live greeting cards or swing down later, whatever.
Good, okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll move into agenda item number six and that's an update from our city administrator.
Just a couple items with Thanksgiving. Just a reminder that city offices will be closed that Thursday and Friday of Thanksgiving from November 25th and 26th. They haven't had the afternoon drive on it yet. Moore Street, both sections are now completely open. The cracks in it and painting's been completed. Snap on Drive, work is still underway up there. The guy started paving last week and will be paving the rest of this week, starting tomorrow, hopefully not getting out of the majority of that. And then there's an agenda item later pertaining to this, but just wanted to notify everyone in the public that the city, we did receive grant for our for the community development block grant for CDDG housing grant applications that we had submitted earlier this year. Now we're going towards the rehabilitation of six qualifying owner-occupied homes. So we've just notified here again, earlier this month, so there'll be a number of processes and reviews that have to play out before that work can actually begin, but we're really excited about the children for that program.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here in city hall that would like to speak?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, Mary, if, those who'd like to speak, if you'd like to come up to the podium and speak.
Bring the crowd.
That way they'll be able to hear you on, on the camera.
Oh, great.
At home watching.
We have one movie star on us. The rest of us are hobbies.
Well, we want you to be heard, so.
So I didn't know if it was on the agenda or not, but this is concerning pickleball.
Right. No, it's on the agenda, so you have an opportunity now to speak.
Oh, awesome. That's the, Teresa, go ahead.
We're here to show support for the, the South Park renovation project down by the pool. We play tennis at the tennis courts down there that were refurbished and repainted a few years ago. We generally have about 10 to 12 people that play down there, that we all play down there together, play pickleball together, and since only, we only have two courts, only four people can play at a time, we have kind of a, we have a little bit of a wait time down there. We just started playing inside in November, so we moved to the Y to play, and we've found a whole new other pickleball group that we didn't know about, and they didn't know about us, so they don't know that we play outside. They're quite a bit younger than us, which is wonderful, but they didn't realize we play outside, so now they're really interested in starting to play outside this spring too, which is really going to put some pressure on, on the courts. So we're really excited about the proposed plan to take down the old handball court at the park, build two new dedicated regulation pickleball courts. Not only will that give us four courts to play on, but we are hoping to bring pickleball tournaments to town, which will bring people and a lot of excitement will be spectators and players to our town. We've actually already started fundraising for that. We spoke to one service club already. We, we'd like to, we really want some really nice amenities down there, and we would love to help with the amenities. That's what we're trying to fundraise for, is to help with these amenities. So we have already approached one service group. We're on the Rotary Club agenda at the end of the month. We're waiting to hear back from the Aquanas when we can get on their agenda. There's a couple other groups that we want to also make our pitch to, and hopefully there's some grants available throughout all of this too, that maybe we can get some grants for this. We're all on board with this project. We hope that you approve it when the plans come back here in a couple of weeks, budget for it, and go forward with it in a timely fashion because we're obsessed with pickleball. And this is just a few of us. Our snowbirds are gone, and they get to play every day all year round, so it's pretty exciting when they come back. So they're all pitching for us. It's no longer just a senior citizens' court. My grand, little grandkids play, her grandkids play, everybody plays. I mean, it's really fun and it's really gaining popularity. It's the fastest-growing sport in the United States right now.
It's been around since like 65, but it's just coming to the rural area. And the snowbirds, and they kind of brought it to us, but...
Because they get to play.
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, we're just kind of catching up. So rural areas, they do.
Well, and like Teresa said, it is the fastest-growing sport in America, maybe the world, I don't know, but the thing that is so nice about it, you know, here, for example, we have our tennis courts. I don't know, too many can play tennis. We got, we're improving the skate park, which is cool. I mean, all that's wonderful, but I, you know, how many people do that? The thing about pickleball, any age can do it. We play with snowbird, like 80-year-olds that will just, they'll beat you up to down there.
Our, our, our.
You know, but on the other hand too, we play, play with my grandkids, any age, you know, and, and that is the cool thing about pickleball, because you have a 10-foot wide area that you need to cover. Well, most people can do that. I mean, I've seen people that in, you know, down in Florida, they can barely walk to the court, but they get on the court and they'll nail you. So, and there aren't a lot of sports right now. The men's softball, oh my gosh, I think there are only five teams. There's not women's softball, there's not women's volleyball, there's only co-ed. So we, it's all about keeping moving and, you know, we need more, we need more sports activity.
Well, and I, I know from, because I'm kind of obsessed with playing, we go to Titanca and play in the gym up there when we need a place to play. I've gone to Clear Lake, to their courts over there, and they're packed, totally packed, and they have about five courts, and you gotta wait to play. We've gone to Four City to play on their courts. So it just shows how popular that has gotten.
So is anybody play tennis anymore?
Well, you can, but we typically don't.
Well, we have the courts, I'm sorry.
We have come down there.
You cross over. Teach you to play pickleball.
Sounds like you're welcoming right now.
We just hope that you see the importance and the growth that it's, pickleball is doing and what it does for people, all ages, to get out there and play. And we've kind of become a little family and meeting new people. There, I mean, there's so many pluses for it.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Very fair.
Now we will go play pickleball.
A little bit of background, we had a public meeting on October 26th, South Park, looking at potential for, for pickleball improvements out there. So we should have quickly here in late November, early December to have a joint meeting with the council and park and recognition to go potential plans for South Park as well as Central Park, and if that's something we want to plan for next year's budget, so.
Good, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone on, on the phone that would like to speak or? Okay. I'm not hearing anyone here, so. There's anyone else in the council chamber, so, okay. We'll move on to agenda number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our November 1st work session and the regular council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve a Class B beer permit for Premier Pizza, approve a Class C liquor license for Algonah Axe House, approve the department reports as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Harley, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move into agenda item number nine, and this is a public hearing. So it's 5:12 and we'll open that public hearing on a proposed rezoning of Norwood Drive properties.
This public hearing pertains to a request to zone, rezone three properties along Norwood Drive as depicted here on the map. This item is referred to the Plan Zoning Commission on November 1st, the commission met on the 11th, and then we had set the public hearing for tonight at 15:00. City Hall has not received any comments regarding this, regarding the public hearing notice to date.
And is there anyone present here that would like to speak then on this public hearing? Okay, and there's no one on the phone, I believe, either. Okay. So it's 5:13 and we'll go ahead and we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move then to new business, agenda item number 10, and this is a third reading pertaining to the sanitary sewer charges.
So this is the third reading of ordinance that establishes a new monthly infrastructure fee for sanitary sewer. Fees are based on the water meter size that serves the property if it goes into the sanitary sewer. This is part of what will need to be a series of increases over several years in order to make the necessary upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. So if this ordinance is approved and adopted tonight, this new monthly fee would look to go into effect on the bills that cover the end of November through the end of November for AMU, so those bills that are for AMU building periods are the bills that will go out at the end of December, early January, is when that fee can actually go into effect. And we could have a number with that in the utility bill, providing explanation of the fee, as well as being some additional information on the website here once it's adopted.
Move to waive the first reading, or the, waive to be, waive the third reading, let's say. Leave it there.
Second. We have a motion from Harley and a second from Don to waive the third reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Move to approve the third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the third reading. Is there any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion then and a second to adopt. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Move to agenda item number 11. This is an ordinance pertaining to Norwood Drive.
So this relates to the public hearing that we held a few moments ago. This is the actual consideration of the ordinance amending. It's proposed that those three properties there would be rezoned from the current highway service business district to light manufacturing, which is the use to the east. Company Kinetic Technologies LLC has contingent purchase agreements on all three of these properties. The contingency is one of them is to the property to be zoned from HSB to LM. The nature of the business will include some manufacturing of prototypes and parts using CNC machines, 3D printers, and similar type equipment, which wouldn't be allowed in current zoning classification. Because of the time-sensitive nature of the real estate contingency, we do have a list on the agenda and the staff recommend, considering all three readings of the ordinance at tonight's meeting, as well as adoption. As I mentioned earlier, the Plan Zoning Commission met on November 11th and considered the rezoning to the west and recommended the amendment from HSB to LM.
And as we can see on the map, what we're doing is instead of being the same zoning as the properties to the east, it'll shift to be the same zoning as the, or, to the west, I mean, it'll shift to be the same zoning as the properties to the east, so it's not a drastic change. Okay, I guess we want to waive the first reading on this, or can we waive the first and second?
I'd rather have you, let's just go with first reading.
Okay.
First time. Just do the first reading.
Waive the first reading on this.
Second.
Okay, Harley makes a motion to waive the first reading. Tyler seconds. Is there any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Rodney.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Have a motion then to approve the first reading, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
And a motion to waive the, the second and third readings.
Yeah, you can combine those Harley. Yes. And I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second to waive the second and the third readings. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And motion to approve the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second and the third readings. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And move to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion from Harley, second from Tyler to adopt. Is there any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Abstain.
Rodney.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number 12 then, and this is in regards to the audit report. I think she left him.
City is audited annually. This is our audit report for this particular year 2020. It was discussed that late during the work session that we had just previous to this meeting, so this is simply an agenda item to acknowledge and accept the resolution or, excuse me, the audit that was provided to the city by the independent auditor.
Move to accept.
I'll second.
Motion from Don, second from Jody to accept the audit report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vote please Deb.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. So this is where we will insert agenda item number 21, and this is concerning 2400 East Oak Street occupancy. Looking.
Yeah, so at 2400 East Oak Street, been having some issues out there. We've consulted with the guys before, but now we've got another kind of a little issue. The last time we talked about this property out there was in closed session. That stuff is all moving forward. But we've discussed that evening that they got so many days to get compliant. We actually have them out there occupying the building without an occupancy permit. And what is it, on Wednesday, I believe it's?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thirty days are up.
Thursday, the 30 days are up. So with council, I want council backing, so to speak. It's time to move in, shut them down, and get this on the right track again.
When I originally talked to Kurt, it was October 19th, I believe, it was the day after the council meeting. I spoke to Kurt and explained that he had 30 days in total, had to have something scheduled within two weeks showing that there was an inspection scheduled, and then the electric inspection had to be done within 30 days and a period of inspection. I talked to Kurt a couple times since then. I talked to him again last Tuesday or Friday. He had filled out a permit application just on Wednesday. So basically three weeks of the 30 days had passed before really anything had happened. He had told me before that Jacob Meyer had filed for the inspection, that Jacob Meyer did not install the electrical in the building. He was just trying to help him out. And it's been kind of confusing as to where we're at in the process now. We gave you 30 days and we're just now applying for the permit to put in the electrical that's already been put in.
I have been in contact with the state electrical inspection, or inspector, a couple times throughout this 30 days. I did place a phone call to him this morning and asked for him to call me back. Did not get a call back. I tried to call him in about 4:30 tonight, tried to catch him to see where we're at in this process, and he's basically told me straight out, until the permit's in hand, I will not come and inspect. So that's kind of where we're at on the electrical side.
Kurt's here too. I don't know if he wants to talk on the subject or?
Yeah.
You want to come up, Kurt, and then, yeah.
All right, so what happened was, back in December when we pulled for our, when I applied for my temporary or whatever, Jacob came out and hooked it up, and he had stated that he was going to pull the permit. So that's what we went with, just to, you know, because, so who I had wired, he's a master electrician, but, you know, we didn't have the contractor's license or nothing like that, but, but he was okay with it. So we went to go call for his permit while we didn't have, Jacob apparently didn't apply for the, or he didn't pull a permit or whatever. So we had to go, we had to become a licensed contractor, which took some time, and we had to get this contractor's number. That took another couple days. Well, then there was the holiday in there. I didn't find out that Jacob didn't pull the permit until about a week ago, because we had tried reaching him and he never, he just never called me back. And I'm not trying to push blame on anybody, but that's just what happened. So as of today, we got the, we were able to get our contractor's license, and we got our, I called that Dan today too, and I never got a call back either, so, I mean, I mean, everything's done. I'm just waiting to hear back from him so we can get inspected now, so.
It is about the fire also?
There's a timeline for it.
You had told me a couple weeks ago that the end would be come up until all the electrical was done.
No.
Is the office wired now?
No, no, he's, he's going to come up, he's going to do a temporary inspection, but I mean, the office isn't going to be done until February, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because I thought you had told me a few weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, but, so, that, that's where we're at, the whole thing, so. I would hope by tomorrow we, I could hear back on him with something, but, you know, we do so much, so. That's all I got.
Well, before you leave, I mean, this is pretty important stuff. If you want to keep the business open, there seems to be a certain lack of urgency in you getting back to people and, and you can say you called them once and I didn't hear back from, I, I'd be calling them every hour if it was going to be, if my doors are closing or not.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I mean, where's the urgency?
I guess, I just, you know, back to the whole situation with before, there was a lot of, with, with the fire situation, the firewall, there was a lot of just dragging their feet there while we were trying to make a point about something in the beginning before construction had even started. So, they just kind of, just sloughed it off, basically. When, when we, when we stated that the building was in violation after we had called the fire marshal to begin with, we were just kind of ignored, and so that's, that's where I'm coming with the whole situation, like, just.
But you knew that the electric had to be inspected and pass inspection before you get the city permit on it.
Yeah, but I mean, I've still, I've still made the points to call. I just, I don't want to be a pain to anybody.
What you need to be.
Well.
I mean, if, if it was between my doors staying open or not, I would be a pain.
Yeah.
You have to remember the squeaky wheel gets the grease, and I'd be calling every hour.
Yeah. But, so that's, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, I guess, we have to, I, I tried, I mean, I've been making, I've called him a couple times, but I don't know what's being said back here when I'm not around, so. As far, I mean, because she had made the comment that he'd been trying to call me multiple times to get ahold of me. Well, he, he'd only ever called me once, so, the, the electrical inspector. So as like, I'm usually pretty good about returning phone calls if I, if somebody calls me. So I, I hope you don't shut our doors, but I guess.
So, so the fire wall issue, I believe we've come to a, a solution.
We have, yes, yes.
Agree with all parties. It's just a matter of getting, you know, put in, you know, but, you know, sort of taking that, the special where we're at right now is, you know, before you can occupy a building, you need to be granted an occupancy permit, and that's standard in every single city building code, and you know, Southland International Party made this code, you know. Obviously, this has been going on for, for several months in terms of knowing it's being occupied without an occupancy permit, which, which is illegal by, by city code. So, you know, it's something that a building official by code has already, you know, granted the authority to, you know, when they're, when they determine that someone's violation to issue notice of that violation, take action to see that that violation ceases. take action to see that that violation ceases. And then if, you know, that doesn't take place, take other legal steps to ensure that it does take place. And then if the violation continues, you know, and it's a municipal fraction, which is, can be up to $750 the first day, and then $1,000 the day after that, the violation continues. So, you know, we could have previously, and, you know, could anytime before, just go and say, you know, you're legally occupied, your building is done, but we also want to, want to work with businesses and be reasonable when it makes sense. But this is just so far long past the timelines that I feel like we've been very reasonable to date, and then some on giving latitude that you can see in this address.
I guess, besides that, I mean, the electric code is the same way. There's a reason why there's electric code. You know, who you have wired, that, you know, you say he's certified, whatever, but we don't know that. He's not a local electrician, apparently. But I guess I've found in the past, when the city has waived some things, it often comes back to bite us years later. It's like, you shouldn't have done that back then. We can't change it now.
Are you making reference to the wall?
No, I'm not.
In the firewall?
No, no, I'm not referring to that at all. I'm talking something that happened six years ago, but.
I was going to say, if that's the case, I mean, we got drove through the mud on that. And that, and I'm glad the city finally agreed to pay for it, but that was, that was a joke.
Well, that was.
But.
But that's correct.
So that's why, that's why it was the way it was. It's being taken care of. We're to the point now, he's just got to come.
But now we're talking about the electric code and the occupancy code, and both of those are, I mean, I'm not comfortable waiving those any longer, because, like I say in the past, you know, you think what could happen? So if there's a fire in your building and it burns down, so who's liable? The city? Because we waived something that we shouldn't have? So I guess I'm not anxious to waive any longer. I think we've gone out on a limb probably further than we should have already.
Has the official notice been sent?
No, not yet. He has till Thursday. So Thursday, he'll deliver the official notice. If that's the direction we get from the council tonight.
How quickly can things move along? I think there's any other one?
I just, I hope he calls me back. That's where we're at. I mean, the permit's been pulled. We just got to get the inspection, but there's just, there was, I mean, last week is kind of when we found out the whole situation that we needed to get all these, this license or this, in this contractor number thing, so. And when, when they called me the first time, that was my busiest time of year. I get half time to sit down and do all this paperwork. So that's, that's why I waited, Deb, till towards, you know, a week ago or whatever.
That's why the month was given too, though. That's why the month was given, because we understood that.
Well, it was two weeks. I mean, was what she had said, and then she called me, so.
No, we needed to see that it had been scheduled within two weeks and done for that month. And you didn't even track.
But you called me. It was two weeks, and then you said you gave me two weeks, and then that two weeks was up, or was supposed to be enough. I said, I got to call Jacob and find out where we're at. And then, so I did, and he never called me back, so I called him again, or a couple days later. And then I didn't get a response, so I had the electrician call him. And then, yeah, it never got pulled, and I thought I had to do all the paperwork, so that's where we were with the thing, so.
What's the likelihood, if he calls you tomorrow, what's? How likely is it that he'll be up here in the next day or two?
I think, I think by law, it's seventy-two hours, but.
And actually, I think he's been a whole lot more responsive than we expected when we moved to the state inspector instead of the local one. So the reports I've heard is that he's been fairly responsive.
So, I mean, we're trying, but that's, I didn't know there was all this stuff we had to do, so.
This isn't something we necessarily need, you know, formal council action on, since the, you know, powers to, you know, review and issue building permits, occupancy permits, as well as enforce codes. It's already, you know, been designated to the building official per city code. But, you know, on the opportunity, you know, to get, hear the situation and what guidance you might have on how we handle this. You know, if we can get something that shows that schedule is going to happen very soon between now and Thursday. I think there, you know, might be some room for reasonable handling of that, but, you know, anything about, you know, that's going to be more than immediate. I think we're going to have to look at enforcing what's, you know, been on the books and has been, you know, for two years. This isn't a new thing that you're going to build a new building, you not occupancy permit, and part of that is electrical inspection.
I guess from what I've heard, I would very much support city staff in resolving this.
I won't recreate the wheel and restate everything that Harley and Jacob said, but I agree. We gave you the thirty days notice to comply with it, and we have to follow the rules, like Harley said, just to protect you in some sort, to help you as a business owner have everything in line, so you can conduct your business.
Any other comments from the council, or? Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, just call or whatever, so I get that thing, or, I got to go Thursday?
I, yeah, let Barb know, right, yeah.
All right, I can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number 13, and this is a resolution concerning the annual financial report.
The city is required to submit a report by Sunday first of each year to the state auditor, providing a summary of our receipts and disbursements and financial reports. So this resolution simply proves that attachment to be submitted to the state. And it covers the fiscal year ending 2021, so more or less, this is taken out of the financials that we're in our audit now.
Take a motion, we approve the resolution, financial, financial report.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Rodney. Motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 14, this is a resolution approving a housing program contract.
As I mentioned, in the city administrator update, you're selected for the community development block grant housing rehabilitation program. Those are federal dollars allocated to the state and administered by the IECOM Development Authority. So what this resolution does is approve a grant contract with IDDA. The total federal fund grant is up to $249,794. That's to support rehabilitation, except up to six homes, as well as cover administration of that grant. And another, a good portion of that money is allocated, if needed, in terms of lead hazard abatement, or if someone has to be temporarily relocated as part of that process. So this resolution simply approved that contract, so we can begin the environmental reviews and everything that goes with that. In terms of the city's contribution towards this, so we have paid $7,000 towards an ICOC to parent the application, do a preliminary environmental review. And then beyond that $7,000, all of the grant money, as well as the administration costs and things like that, that will all come out of that grant, and there won't be any more city funds required towards the program.
Do we have potential applicants, or do we advertise those once we have the grant?
They have already been approved in ICOC.
They have been.
They have everything lined up.
You did, okay.
So the potential applicants, their, their financials have all been gone through with ICOC. We did a first count, first serve of the ones who were qualified. You had all the information there, so ICOC has all that information.
Good.
And we made an update about thirty of those pre-applications, so if one of those, you know, that wasn't the first six, if they move, or they're no longer ineligible, you know, those others will move up on the list. So we won't be soliciting any applications or things like this for the program, since we already have that pre-approved list as part of the application.
Been a good interest campaign.
Honestly, I'd like to try and do this like every two years, since we've had so much interest in it. I put a grant every couple of years.
Nice way to upgrade the community. Yeah, it's good.
I'll make a motion to approve the CDBG housing program contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Jody, a second from Tyler. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 15 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement.
This is an agreement with the Trura Architecture, with the Office in Clear Lake. This would be to perform a feasibility study for the new street department, public works building. The total cost of feasibility study is a lump sum fee of $8,000. But the scope of that would include working with the city to identify our current and future needs, coming up with potential layouts of the building, as well as evaluating sites that, you know, based on our needs, and then coming up with some preliminary cost estimates, which then could determine, for use to determine our next steps and timeline in terms of upgrading the street, replacing the street department garage. We had met with the Ways and Means Committee, excuse me, Streets and Sewer Committee last week, and went over the proposal. We did not go out and solicit RFQs or RFPs from other architecture firms. We're doing research with some firms around the area. Trura has a very strong track record and portfolio of public works and these types of buildings. So we thought it made sense to move forward with them as the firm to work with on this. So the resolution approves the attached proposal, but what we're looking at is just that phase one, just a lump sum $8,000 for the feasibility study, and phase two, only, you know, be in the future if the city decided to pursue the project and pursue it, the same architecture firm.
Do we have more vehicles or the existing, the existing building in poor condition? What's the driver behind it?
The, one of the big challenges is just the size of it, and then that was built in the fifties and the size of equipment, both just internally in the building, but the doors as well. There's a lot of equipment that we can't pull in with it attached, or it has to be positioned in a very delicate way. We've got that much margin for error. And so then again, there's a way we can utilize that existing building, attach onto it, or another area on that site, because other than it's just undersized for today's equipment, the building itself is generally in okay shape. So if that is used for storage, or potentially we can park the department field office there. Those will kind of be a variety of different factors that we put into that.
Tyler, if you've seen like county, state, other city streets, they have bays where you pull straight in with your equipment. Our equipment comes in one end and has to get angled, and then it comes out the other end. If we had a fire in there, we would lose probably ninety-five to a hundred percent of our equipment, because you couldn't get it out fast enough. It's kind of unsafe the way they have to do it.
Like a jigsaw puzzle, quite honestly.
Yeah, it really is. You know, the equipment in there and out of there, and it's, it's, we built back in the fifties, so it's like seventy years old. The equipment's gotten much bigger in those seventy years.
So initial cost is eight thousand. How much continuing on with this?
You know, we, to see, you know, once we got the preliminary cost estimates, you know, I think we've looked at construction costs of some other facilities we're at that have been built in recent years, and we're probably, you know, this was pre-COVID. At that time, we had two and a half to three million. You know, that number, you know, what it's going to do with COVID. And now, you know, we have to look at in terms of if we still come up with our financing plan for that, where that money's going to come from, if we want to bond a part of it. You know, or, you know, if we're really, if we want to be at this number, okay, what can we do to stay under that number? But to really advance the conversation any further than what we already have, we need some outside expertise to guide us through that for, to make the, to get to the next point where we can make a decision.
So phase two, we don't really know what that cost would be if we decide to move forward?
That would be something negotiated mutually agreed to as either a percent of the total building cost, or also a lump sum design fee.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's a major step then at, with phase two?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Move to approve the feasibility study.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Jody. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda Item Number 16 is a resolution concerning the employment agreement with Jacob, our city administrator.
This resolution amends the employment agreement with the city administrator, changing language regarding the timeframe of the annual review, the annual base salary, providing for tuition reimbursement, as well as a monthly vehicle allowance.
Motion to approve the amended employment agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 17 is to approve a pay application.
Pay application number four for the Moore Street Snap-on Peak Industrial Park project. The amount due to this pay application is $490,315.92. The balance to finish is $931,316. Engineer Heather, do you have any comments?
Move to approve. Have a motion from Harley, a second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I'm assuming with how they're coming along here, if they just have some cement work to do on the sides, that pretty soon, Highway 18 will be open there? They won't have the barricades up anymore?
Yeah, I know they wanted to leave the barricades up until they got all that work immediately next to the highway done. So if they can pave the east half of the road starting tomorrow, they're planning to do the handwork. So that'd be the approach to 18, as well as the snap, the two drivers and the Snap-on. We're planning to do that handwork yet this week as well. So hopefully, I'm not making promises, I want to check with Matt first on that, but hopefully, yeah, by the end of this week or next week, that that work for the current lane closure cleanup will be complete.
Okay. Yeah, Agenda Item Number 18 is also a pay application.
This is a pay application number four to Fort Dot Asphalt Company for the Midland Overlay project. The total amount due is $211,183. Though we expect probably one more pay application before we close out the project, and just a few thousand dollars for a final seeding and backflow work.
All move to approve the pay applications.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Jody. Is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, agenda item number nineteen is also a pay application.
Pay application number ten for volleyball renovation project from Hankel Construction. The amount is three thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, balance to retain is a period of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. Um, this is just for some minor site work that was done. Uh, the bulk of that three thirty-seven is pretty much all retainage on the work completed to date and then the exterior improvements, which, um, unfortunately had to be delayed into spring.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Tyler, a second from Jody. Any discussion on the library pay application? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, agenda item number twenty is to approve the right-of-way permit for the Kasuth Drift Skippers.
This is a snowmobiling club that over here, they, they come to the council and ask for approval, um, from the city to groom, uh, trails and then use the rightways and put them seat limits along highways eighteen and one sixty-nine. Um, with city's approvals, then they'll submit that permit to the DOT for, for their approval since it's actually DOT right-of-way. So just, this approves, um, using the rightway with the seat limits.
Well, as we had a little bit of snow, I imagine more snow could come, so I will move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, uh, second from Brad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jody? Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move then to agenda item number twenty-two, and this is an appointment, uh, for the, to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the remainder of Tony Ram's term. Do we have any names for that position at all? Okay.